Thank you. We do have a forum, Mike Mosko is not present, but all the other members of the planning committee are here tonight. We need to look at the agenda, are there any changes or additions that we can make? If not, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Oh.
Second?
Seven.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
There were no July the 7th minutes because we did not leave on July 7th, so we don't have those reviewed. So we can move right to the public hearings. The first one on the agenda is case number RZ-8-21-06. Madison Land Holdings LLC, Mr. Powell O'Manon has submitted an application to disown a six acre portion of a thirty-nine and one tenth acre parcel from R1 Municipal Residential to M1 Lincoln Justice with conditions. The applicant has submitted a proffer letter limiting the M1 zoning area exclusively to a storage facility, AKA many storage units used. A conceptual site plan has been submitted with the application showing seven mini storage structures. Two structures measure sixty-five feet by two hundred feet and five structures measure sixty-five feet by one hundred and fifty feet. If approved, an official site plan submitted will be required to be reviewed by the Planning Commission and approved by the Board Supervisors. The subject parcel located on Fishback Road, Route 772, to date does not have a postal address. The parcel is identified on Madison County's tax maps as forty dash twenty. Mr. Webb, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I'll add. Okay, I'll add. Easy though, please. Let me watch it. I've been working hard. I'll just talk really loud. So I'll add a few things. As you can see, it's resuming with conditions, so if this is approved, it would be limited to many storage units. I would have a letter for Mr. O'Manon. A few things I would like to point out is really, I'm really trying to think of kind of two maybe. One more direct issue, one maybe more of a big picture. With VDOT, it's all about, you know, the entrance and what they require. Many storage units, and I did talk to Mr. Gore from VDOT at a conference call about it, is really, of all the different commercial activities, it's a pretty low traffic generating use. So I looked at the Traffic Against Two Engineers a day handbook, and just sort of, just give you an idea, a thousand square feet of many storage units, seventy-four thousand, is expected to have two and a half trips a day. So it takes seventy-four thousand divided by thousand, multiply that by two and a half, you're looking at a build-out, which could be a while, you're looking at maybe a hundred and eighty-five, let's just say two hundred trips a day as build-out. So that's roughly half a dozen houses. Usually a home, ten trips a day, so, you know, twenty houses. So it's not a high traffic generator, so they were quick to kind of point that out. I think with the site plan, when we can give the site plan, Mr. O'Manon, we can give the site plans to VDOT to have them review them when they come back with the site plan because this will be done phases as they leave space. They'll come back with a different site, with a new site plan each time. They might start out with a couple of units and then slowly as they occupy those units, come back with additional site plans. Having said that, I think the only, I said my recommendation for approval was, you know, this is a R1 zoning area and I do believe it is a prime residential area, given that it's close to the sewer plant. But having said that, I've, you know, it's been a baked piece, partial for, I guess, preventer, so it makes sense. I think it's a good location. It's sort of tucked back, sort of towards the far end of the property, can be buffered easily. It will work with the applicant when they come in with the site plan and talk about the road. And eventually, that road will obviously be paved. But I do believe, at least for maybe the first structure or two, gravel, and then shift the tar, it will work with VDOT as far as the entrance, but they didn't have a heartburn about the entrance, given, I mean, you look at Fishback Road there, I mean, site distance, about six hundred feet to the north, to the south, two thousand feet, it's pretty ideal as far as site distance. So otherwise, any questions for me on this, or the planning commission, or?
Okay, any questions from the planning, Mr. Webb? Do we have anyone from the community that wishes to comment on this application? Well, I skipped one. I would like to say anything. Yes, okay, sorry.
I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. I would like to make one comment. We'd like to do this site plan with the whole project at one time, if we could, even though we may phase it in one year and the next year because of the storm one imagine and everything, it should be all taken care at one time, if that's possible, if that's the way we generally do it. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to ask them.
Anyone from the planning commission that have questions?
I think the lady back here would just raise her hand.
Yeah. Well, yeah, we want to ask community comments. Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Manon. Now we get to the community questions. Yes, you would say your name and address?
Whoa, 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 whoa. Microphone, please.
Up here, please. If you would start again with your name and address.
My name is Heidi Sage, 1057 Jack Shop Road in Rochelle. And my question is, will there be any kind of a buffer of trees or shrubs along Fishback Road concealing these rows of storage sheds as people drive by this very scenic piece of Madison?
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you.
And I'm Shirley Neely. I live on Maple Drive and my property of Jones, your property at the very end, and I just want to know how close it's going to be where I can see.
Please address the planning commission with your comments.
Excuse me?
This is not a question, so.
I just want to know if I could see the site plan so I know how it would affect my home in case I want to sell it.
Okay, so your question, you're asking us if there's going to be a site plan that you'll be able to?
Yes, because I don't know how close of what I would see from my property or what I would. I have no idea.
Thank you.
That's my thought.
Any other comments?
What is your name?
Shirley.
Shirley?
Yes.
Put your head to us.
Mr. Chairman, my name is John Quinley. I live on Ruth Road. I'm here representing Madison Presbyterian Church on the grounds building. And most of this sort of stuff, I think, is really being or going to be answered, but we are likewise, as Mrs. Sage, interested in what it's going to be. The statistics of it, accurate, it's up in its goal, what it's going to look like, how much it's going to be hidden, what about the safe entry, may get into the area by motor vehicles, what size motor vehicle may we expect be going in and out there over time, a large, etc. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the community?
We'll just say, if you have a pack, you can see the, kind of, the site plan that they have. The one property that, I don't know, it's probably over a hundred feet or so would be Bobby Reed or Jenkins, I think that's really the only one that I could see that might have some visual impact, but the simple solution to that when they do bring the site plan is, I mean, it's, that's a pretty thick, wood area, just leaves some woods around the perimeter, that's, you know, something that we could bring to a class when they do send a site plan, so I think that's very simple to solve.
Yes, at this point, this is an application for disowning ordinance. The site plan will be kind of the next step in the process.
Well, just good to know, I think it can easily achieve.
Anyone else from the community who want to talk? Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions from the planning commission?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that case number RZ-08-21-06 be recommended to the board supervisors for approval.
Okay, motion is for me, and second?
Second.
Second is for me, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, light sign. The second case is case number OA-08-21-07, amending the zoning ordinance, specifically deleting slash amending portions of Article 14, general provisions, fourteen one dash one, fourteen one dash two, fourteen one dash three, fourteen one dash four, fourteen one dash five, fourteen dash two, and fourteen dash two A. If approved, the result of the proposed amendments would be eliminating the requirement that a water source, i.e. a drilled well, be installed slash completed prior to the issuance of a drilling permit. Mr. Webb, do you have any to add?
And this is just something that was sort of brought to the department's attention. Of course, we will still talk about this. We're sort of an outlier regarding requiring the well be dug first. And I sort of talk to contractors and developers, it's, the well is usually the last thing that's done, so it's sort of, we have a little bit different timing for jobs in Madison, so it does sometimes happen with, when you're ready to build, you have to wait a few months or a few weeks before you get the well drilled. So it just, we're just sort of an outlier. I think, you know, we've talked about it several times in meetings and, you know, points have been brought up, technology that's used now for wells. I think Mr. O'Manon even shared his experience in the county, having been involved in a lot of drilling of wells, but he's really experienced one time, it was difficulty and that was just, you had to go down deeper. And I know the reason behind this, the fact of the eighties, as it was discussed, there was a severe drought. I think we can just add something to our application. Obviously, I can't see how the county would be liable if someone can't find water. I've always said, you can always, worst case scenario, install a system, that's not quite uncommon, but not ideal for a lot of folks. So this is really just something that was brought to our attention and, you know, I feel like you bring this into the line with the other counties, I don't think by doing it this way, we're doing anything wrong. I think we're just being cautious, but it just seems to be something that, at least in the developed community, they're not going to find out. So I think it's a reasonable change. And we're removing some things, just FYI, there's some things about certificate of occupancy and things that Jamie just said, and citing the Michigan uniform building code, he just says, it's in another part of our code, but our ordinance says, he just says, it's really not necessary in the zoning ordinance. Most of these aren't deletions, but since our last meeting, at least the workshop, I did make a change to fourteen dash one two, and just, we changed building inspector to building official, and you may appeal to the board, Building Code Board of Appeals. We had board of zoning before, so that's really all I have to say.
Any questions for me, or? Any questions from the web, from the planning commission? Yes, Ligon and planning commission meetings, we've discussed the fact that contractors experienced in building are willing to take the risk of not finding water, albeit a very small risk. But we also have discussed putting people on notice, particularly people that are building their own houses or initiating that process on their own, that the county is not going to bail them out. Is that going to be expressed formally somewhere?
Yeah, I think on our forum, we can simply, on our building permit form for a new construction, we can simply add a check or admission box saying, you know, something to the effect that, you know, county bears no responsibility if well, you can't find water at property. I don't see how it could be responsible, but it doesn't hurt, I mean, I don't think there'd be any act of negligence or malfeasance or anything about the county if someone is asked to build a house and has to drill fifteen hundred feet to find water, but we can definitely add statements on it and see whether it hurt.
I think that'd be very desirable to have that statement, make it clear, just a little check.
Mr. Chairman, I would add, just an补充 comment. I believe it would be appropriate in these cases where the building permit is being sought by the builder rather than the owner, I think it would be appropriate to have the owner sign off so that we have evidence that they have signed this acknowledgement as well. But otherwise, I don't have any objection to what Mr. Webb has presented.
Mr. Chairman, what you just said makes sense, except what it just says, you don't have a buyer for it, so is the owner going to sign off twice, I mean, builder going to sign off twice?
You mean the builder is the owner? I mean, is that, is that what you mean? Yeah, somebody owns it. Yeah.
Somebody owns it. If it's builder, then the builder's the owner, and we'd check it twice.
We could do a separate forum, I mean, just add it, just a little quick statement, sign initial, I don't, I mean, put on, just have it on file, so it'd probably be the easiest thing.
I had a question, where you said that the contractor said they were willing to take the risk, what do they mean?
Well, I think they don't really see a risk, so I don't know if they're really, I mean, if it's a, I mean, if we've had it one case in a whole year, I guess that's a risk that's pretty common, so I don't think, and some of them are here, so maybe they'll enlighten us a little more than I can, but I guess they just don't see it as a, as a...
We've got some builders here, I'd like to hear what they've got to say about.
Yeah. Next step. Any other questions from Mr. Webb from the planning commission? Okay, any comments, I'll be in public.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, with the planning commission. My name is Anthony Flatoruck. I'm a local builder with the 2033 Mandarin Road, West Virginia. I've been building in this county and the surrounding counties since the eighties. What we're talking about here is a simple, practical matter. With the technology that we have today, we can drill a well, we can go deep with the well, if we don't get water, when we go deep, we can hydraulically fracture the well and bring water into the well. I have run into an instance where I've had to drill a second well, but that is very, very rare. In the last year, I've probably had to frac three wells, and each well has had a sufficient yield when you do that. There are a number of issues that come about that make this, you know, a very simple matter. When an owner sends you to get your permits, you have to sign a document. If you, the builder is making the application for the owner, that you are the builder, the agent for the owner, so the owner has already authorized you to place your signature on that for them. So that is handled. Another thing I'd like to point out is, I can't speak authoritatively on this, but in the last forty years, I'm not aware of one building permit that hasn't been issued because water hasn't been found. I build in a lot of the jurisdictions surrounding us and familiar with them, a lot of builders that even build further out, and we are the only jurisdiction nearby that has this requirement. Now, there's another economic component in today's volatile world that is devastating to those who are involved. What happens is, you get your health permit, and you have to drill a well, go through the process, if it's a deep well, it can take a couple of weeks. But part of the process is that you have to pay the well driller, and they're very busy, and that can take a month to three or four months, and that process, everything sits still while it waits. And in today's very volatile pricing environment, that can cost the owner, the contractor, or both, or a shared impact, anywhere from ten to seventy thousand dollars while you wait, making some projects not feasible, not feasible because of water, but not feasible because of cost. So that is devastating to folks who have their heart set or their life savings set on building a house, it'll actually, you know, cause an actual harm. And to that end, removing this is the intelligent and practical thing to do, and I'm sure that anyone here sees the merit in that, particularly since no other jurisdiction has the requirements that you're speaking of when we go forward to get a well. And a well is not critical path. Basically, it has to be done before the house is ready, but you have the flexibility of finding your well driller and getting it in place sometime during the process. What we normally have to do is, as soon as we have the health permit, for lack of a better term, we have to start beating on the well driller right then to get it a month before we close the house when we need water on, for the plumber to do the final. So it takes us that long. And what happens is, other builders in other jurisdictions are affected by us having to step in front of them to get a permit to drill a well before they get one somewhere else, but it, so it's creating a stir throughout the industry that is totally unnecessary. And I would be happy to answer questions from anyone who chooses to ask.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
I have a question, one. When you go to other counties and you apply for your permit to the other counties, you have to sign off any paper anywhere that says you're responsible to get water?
No.
I didn't think so.
The Health Department has their own set of regulations that requires that you have an operating permit for a well and a setting, and you can't get an occupancy permit without that success. So you are already, as soon as you have those permits, bound to get it done, or the house isn't finished, and you don't get paid. It's a pretty good-sized intent.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any other comments on the public? Webb, please.
Good evening, folks. I'm Chris Artelli, Artelli Construction. I live on Rep. Hill Road in Aurora. I've been building housing in Madison and surrounding areas since the late eighties. I spoke at the workshop meeting, it's hard to expand upon what Anthony so eloquently described, he did a very good job in trying not to repeat what he's already, the information he's provided. I'll just relay one example we had several years ago. Wintertime, the ground is frozen, and in the afternoon, the sun comes out, the ground thaws out, and we can't get a well truck up there. We had this house pre-sold, we were building it for someone, they had a loan commitment, interest rates were rising, they did not want to bump up against that deadline and have to start all over again with a higher rate. After fighting this for weeks, we get a little stretched, we could get a well truck in, but the well truck is not available. In the meantime, we could have dug our footings, we could have been building our foundation, but we're still hung up waiting for the well truck. We eventually hired a bulldozer and had to get the well driller to agree, and we had to assume all the responsibility for that bulldozer to drag that well truck into the site so we could get the well drilled. It was either we were going to lose this project, or the homeowner's going to lose their home. I echo and second everything that Anthony said, he did a very good job explaining that, so we'll take up any more of your time. Anybody have any questions for me?
Any questions, any planning commission? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any other comments from the public? Any comments from the planning commission?
I just got one comment, Mr. Chairman, I think we need to do this as simple as possible. Do away with it, do away with it, keep it simple. Everybody that's in business, everybody that's building a house, knows you've got to have water.
Do you want to hear a motion on this case?
If you are, I have to make a motion. I did just write a little on page four, you'll see, just a sample, just, you know, so we're not going to confuse, on page four, you'll see a...
And I've noticed on that motion you've written that you did not include fourteen dash two A. Is that staying in the ordinance now?
Thank you. Go ahead and press, and fourteen dash two A, you're right, sorry about that.
Do you want to give a motion on this case?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, case number OA-08-21-07, we recommend to the board supervisors for approval.
Second? Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, light sign? Okay. Case will be recommended. Next case is case number OA-08-21-08, amending the zoning ordinance, specifically deleting Article 12 dash one dash two, types of signs, number eleven, political signs. If approved, regulations slash restrictions for political signs would be removed from the zoning ordinance. Mr. Webb, any?
I will say that April just went to a zoning training, the first thing, the attorney that was hosting, and said, we recommend removing all references to political signs in the ordinances, so it seems to be popular. And this is just something we had talked about as a, kind of a housekeeping thing a few months ago, and so here we are. And, you know, some people, you know, first speech of political signs, always say, yeah, they eventually, you know, times will come down, they'll back up, come down, and it is very much considered to be sort of our people's free speech nowadays, so at least at the conference that April went to, it was recommended just to remove them, and I think that's probably the easiest thing to do.
Any questions from the planning commission, Mr. Webb? We've discussed this quite a bit already. Any public comments concerning this case?
Yeah, I am. I'm Mike Fisher. So, I mean, I know I wasn't there, I'm not on the planning division, but so I can run for office and I can get my sign, so they're sticking at my corner and I can see them grow another mole. I mean, everybody says VDOT comes along, I can't get VDOT right now, new tree, so I mean, this is some motivation, I mean, we have it on the ordinance, it's some motivation for somebody that's going to do it to do it. The people that are not going to do it, well, they'll do it anyway, but at least we can go and say, hey, we have an ordinance, you got to get your sign. This way, this seems like we've just given up. More trash, somebody that owns land on a road like two thirty... More trash, somebody that owns land on a road like two thirty one to pick up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? If not, any comments or discussion from the planning commission?
Yeah, I would, I would just respond to you, Mike, that there is a constitutional issue here. Political speeches protected. And these signs, believe me, I think they're in high source to constitute political speech. So I think that, um, the wisdom suggests that we ought to recognize the Constitution or we're interested in getting rid of these signs after an election.
Any other comments or discussion from the finding? If not, do I hear a motion concerning this case? Never done before, but I want to take a crack at it. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to, yeah, approve that case. Approve case number oh eight, dash oh eight, dash two one, dash oh eight.
All right, I are second. Okay, motion is made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Okay, case is approved. All right, to be recommended. All right, now, our fourth case is case number oh eight, dash zero eight, dash two one, dash zero nine. Amending the zoning ordinance specifically Article fourteen, dash four, special use permits, and fourteen, dash four, dash two. If approved, these amendments will clarify conditional approvals of special use permits by the planning commission and the board supervisors.
Another thing that we worked on for a while and I do think for amendments, which is part of what we do in the committee of the right, I think it's written very well, very clear. That's what we wanted, so especially fourteen, dash four and fourteen, dash four, two. I think they're good amendments. I appreciate you putting those together.
Any questions from Mr. Webb, the planning commission? If not, any public comments on this case? If not, any discussion on the planning commission?
I would just say that we, the planning commission, spent a fair amount of time on this issue and the recommended approval, proposed recommended approval. Language is the language that we have cracked.
Any other comments to discuss? All right, do I hear a motion on this case?
Mr. Chairman, case number oh eight, oh eight, dash one one, dash oh nine, we recommend that the board supervisors approve it.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Okay, approve case number oh eight, zero eight, two one, zero eight. Okay, do we have any other items from the planning commission that we need to discuss? Any other items from the public? If not, do I hear a motion for adjournment? Second? Okay, motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. You're adjourned.
All right, I'd like to call the board supervisors portion of this meeting to order. We do have a forum. We do need to adopt an agenda. Anybody have anything we can add to the agenda? We do have a closed session this evening and we do have one minor piece to do. But that's all there. Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? Chairman, all in favor, the public say aye.
Aye.
Case number RZ, dash oh eight, dash twenty one, dash oh six, Madison County, L L C. And Mr. O'Bannon has submitted an application to resume six acre portion of thirty-nine and one tenth acre parcel from R one, residential to M one, limited industrial. With conditions, which conditions? The applicant has submitted a proffer letter limiting the M one zoned area exclusively to storage facilities, AKA mini storage units. Use a conceptual site plan has been submitted with the application of seven square meters of storage structures, two structures measuring sixty-five by two hundred, and five structures sixty-five by one fifty. If approved, an, an official site plan submitted would be required to be reviewed by the planning commission and approved by the board supervisor. The subject parcel is located on Fishback Road Route seven, seven, two. To date, does not have a postal address. The parcel is identified on Madison County tax map as forty, dash twenty. Ligon, do you have anything else to add?
No, sir, don't worry. When I said there's a planning commission portion...
Anybody have any questions for Ligon? Mr. O'Bannon, anything to add?
No, sir. I'll be happy to answer any questions we have.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. O'Bannon? All right, mail to the public. To the public. Back to the board.
All I'll say, Mr. Chairman, is I'm sympathetic to a couple of questions that the public asked and liked them. We'll be anxious to see the conceptual site plan become a site plan and that's when we'll be anxious. But other than that, I'm, I'm approving them. I'm in favor of this one.
And a motion?
I'm moved to approve case RZ, oh eight, dash twenty one, dash oh six, as recommended by the planning commission.
I second. Very good. Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? Chairman, all in favor, the public say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Case number oh eight, dash oh eight, dash twenty one, dash oh seven. Amending the zoning ordinance specifically deleting and amending fourteen, Article fourteen, general provision fourteen, dash one, dash one, fourteen, dash one, dash two, fourteen, dash one, dash three, fourteen, dash one, dash four, fourteen, dash one, dash five, fourteen, dash two, and fourteen, dash two, eight. If approved, the results of the proposed amendment would be eliminate, eliminating the requirements of water source, i.e. a drilled well, deinstalled, complete, installed and completed prior to the issuance of the building permit. Ligon, anything to add?
I assume the voice was one of us said.
Sean Gregg's on the phone with us. Sean Gregg, anything? Anytime.
Nothing other than making sure, and while I understand Mr. Fattlerblatt's comments related to the fact that the contractor is the agent for the owner, I really see this as more of a consumer protection issue because I think it's important that people understand that they are under this risk. But again, none of that affects the modifications of the ordinance. You know, it's just a matter of modifying our application to make sure that people understand what they are doing whenever they build without having the guaranteed water. And I realize that it happened during an extreme drought, you know, approximately forty years ago. And, you know, sometimes bad situations beg for bad law. But I think that that modification to our building permit application will take care of the issue.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gregg. Any questions for Ligon on this? To the public. To the public. Mr. Gregg, what?
Short and sweet. Based on the possibility of approval that tonight's meeting, when would this be effective?
I'll sign it, I'll sign it here within about twenty minutes and we'll take care of it. Then we'll be effective.
Thank you.
Other comments from the public? All right, back to the board. I know the planning commission didn't say with disclaimer. I don't believe they did at least. I am in favor of putting a disclaimer of responsibility with a sign off from the property owner and the, the contractor. If they're the same people, it should take moments more just to sign in two spots. But I think it kind of protects us on the other side. It is a change in Madison. We'll do it. Anybody have any verdicts for that? That's my only call now.
Yes, sir. May I speak? Your question?
I'd bill for people all over the U.S. and some people actually relocating from out of the U.S., sometimes gaining that additional signature once you've been authorized as an agent could be problematic.
If I could respond briefly, if you send them an email, a PDF, get them to sign it overnight, I think that takes care of the distance issue.
Does that work?
Sure.
Okay. Any other comments, Chris Gregg, any different?
I honestly think it's a solution in search of a problem. We never needed it. I don't see the value in the additional steps. It's just another box to check, which could have some unintended consequences, which was the whole problem with the original ordinance. It had unintended consequences. I'll be in favor of not having that additional requirement, but if that's the way it goes, that's fine.
Ligon, what, what was the, the sentence you, you wrote up as an disclaimer?
I really haven't written one up.
Oh, you haven't?
Yeah, just something.
Mr. Chairman, I had sent a memorandum which out of my office was sent to you tomorrow with some proposed language that I think takes care of it. And again, it's not part of the ordinance. It's just something to be included in the application for a building permit.
Well, Mr. Gregg, couldn't it be something, just the language is on the application, but doesn't really have to be checked in box, checked off or signed? It's just, it's there? By applying for and submitting the request for a building permit, you acknowledge that that is a condition of it?
We can, we can do that. I mean, again, again, the substance of the ordinance, I don't have any issue with the modifications. It's just making sure that the general public is aware of the fact that, number one, this is a change in Madison County and number two, that you're not looking to the county to pay for their problem once it arises. Because I understand that what happened back in the eighties is people were looking to the county to fix the problem for them. And the county does not want to be in the business of doing that.
All right, so maybe the direction is that we use bold print with the disclaimer and then it's taken care of.
I can live with that.
There you go. All right.
My concern is how many owners actually see their building permit? You know, how many landowners review the building permit after their builder has applied for it?
It's forwarded to their lender and it's posted on their site so that it's almost, it's part of our package to them, but I don't know if it's everyone's package to them.
Well, and I, I agree with you, Fattlerblatt. The concern is, you know, having called to house and having represented people building houses, they are so focused on the finished product that these are the types of details that potential homeowners and home builders tend to overlook because they're just not focused on. But this is the later part, you have to focus on it, definitely.
Yeah. All right, where are we, folks? What do y'all want to do here? You want to put in bold? You want to get people to initial off? The, there you go. And hire a reputable contractor. All right, let's pledge the board.
So the motion do we need to say?
Sure.
To add the bold print disclaimer? Mr. Chairman, I'm moved to approve case number oh, oh eight, dash zero eight, dash two one, dash zero seven with bold print disclaimer included.
All right, motion made and seconded. Further discussion? Chairman, all in favor, the public say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Case number oh eight, dash twenty one, dash oh eight, amending the zoning ordinance specifically deleting Article twelve, dash one, dash two, types of signs, number eleven, political sign. And if regulations, restrictions for political signs would be removed from the zoning ordinance. There you go. Ligon, do you have anything to add?
I will say that you can regulate political signs. You just can't, you can't pull them out as a separate, you know, so the way, where Gilbert... This all started with a, I think it was a church that put up a small temporary sign. And now Gilbert agreed, Arizona state had to move it and it all, it's a Supreme Court. So what it says here is the Supreme Court decision confirmed that local governments' regulation of signs specifically based on content is unconstitutional. So in other words, you can't just pick out political signs. It has to be, basically affect all signs. So that's why we're simply, just we're moving it. I mean, I guess, you know, we have signs that, I don't really like sign ordinance. It's a nightmare to sign ordinance in the past, in the past life. But, you know, my, my feeling is, again, based on the recent training that April did too, is that as written, it's definitely, does not jive with the Supreme Court decision having a standalone political sign ordinance, it would be just part of your sign.
And, and Mr. Chairman, I agree with Mr. Webb on this point. Okay, bring the compliance with the recent Supreme Court decision of Gilbert.
And I think that's all we're doing. It was, you know, people brought their attention last fall and things, so I think we're just, I think we're doing the right thing, Mr. Webb.
Comments, comments, questions for Ligon?
I'm like Mike, I have a hard front for this one. I know how political signs go off. Poor Jonathan doesn't even know it, but six or eight months after you ran the last time, one of your signs was on, some roadblock was on. And I'm sure whoever put it up told you they were going to take it down.
It's one of my byways.
Yard sale signs are put everywhere. They're, they're tacked on to stop signs. They're tacked on to posts on the, on the state. The state used to go around and pull those things off and I think they got lazy or maybe they passed an order that it'll carry more. But I think if you don't somehow regulate these signs, they're, I'm like Mike, they're going to be everywhere. People don't take them down.
We could, I think we could say temporary signs in general. Maybe one way is to do an ordinance which, which governs all temporary yard type signs. That doesn't...
And political.
That doesn't, you know, make a difference between political or whether it's a special sale or, you know, people do that now.
Anything that's different.
Graduating senior. You know, it's just so many ways which it goes. But that might be a way, just take a blanket, temporary signs.
I think that would be better, that at least have some control maybe.
That would be another step, I think. Right, we got to get the word political out of this one and then work on the other. The political signs, yard sale signs, everyone's got to return to it. I used to keep getting signs on the end of my road that are internet. And it's the same sign. All they needed to do was straighten the other one and it would have been fine, but they just put up another one. I'm going to throw those away too. Let's get rid of this one and move on and do something different just to get rid of roadside trash. Certainly, we must be regulating. We regulate roadside trash. Somebody has to do that. Yeah, we don't need it. All right. Anybody got any more comments for Ligon? To the public, to the public. You still don't like him, even?
No, I don't. And to, to address your, you can throw a Mc, a Mc... So somebody eats McDonald's and exactly at my road, and you know, they're finished and they throw them out. So, I mean, I'm sure there's other people that say that, but the problem is laudering is against the law in the state of Virginia, but you almost have to have him, I was a magistrate. You almost have him on camera to prove who threw the trash. So the trash goes everywhere and it's up to the landowner or somebody, a good citizen. They have signs at people's, you know, Ruins Club, they go and police the road. I mean, they wouldn't have to do that if we could catch somebody and, and make a point of it. They have signs at people's, you know, Ruins Club, they go and police the road. I mean, they wouldn't have to do that if we could catch somebody and, and make a point of it. And that's all I'm saying about the, uh, same thing with the political signs. They were all over the place. I let people put political signs up, but we finally had to go to the church right there at Cresseray now. It used to be Ken Walk, and just pick them up, put them in a truck, and haul them away. So that's, that was my issue.
I thought you were going to go after slow eaters.
No, I was toning it down because I'm going to ask you for something later.
Oh, great. Yeah, yeah, so I forgot about that one. Um, all right. Any other public comment? Back to the board. What do y'all want to do?
Yeah, Mister Chairman, I make the motion to amend Madison County zoning ordinance, deleting Article twelve dash one dash two, number eleven. Case number O-A dash zero eight dash twenty-one dash O-eight.
Second.
Which made, Secretary. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signature, if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Do the same sign. All right, case number O-A dash O-eight dash twenty-one dash O-nine, amending the zoning ordinance specifically Article fourteen dash four, standards for issuance of special use permits, and fourteen dash four dash, dash two. If approved, these amendments would clarify conditional approvals of special use permits by the planning commission and Board of Supervisors. Mister Webb?
Uh, no more to add? Then what's that, an explanation?
Any questions for Mister Webb? To the public? Back to the board.
Mister Chairman, I'm moved to approve case O-A dash zero eight dash twenty-one dash O-nine, as recommended by the planning.
Second.
Uh, motion made, Secretary. Discussion? Thanks to the planning commission for working on this. We've only been talking about it for like a few years. Uh, really appreciate it. Um, further? Yes. Uh, motion made, Secretary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signature, if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Do the same sign. Um, last one. Amendments slash revisions in Chapter four, Article two, outdoor music or entertainment ordinance of the codes over at Madison County pretending. The ordinance is proposed to be renamed as the Temporary Events Outdoor Musical or Entertainment Festival and Firework or Pyrotechnic Display Order. Uh, specifically changes, revisions are proposed for section four dash nineteen, purpose, four dash twenty, definitions, four dash twenty-two, violations, four dash twenty-three, permit required, four dash twenty-four, application generally, four dash twenty-six, at, action on application, four dash twenty-seven, condition precedent to granting, or, you know, four dash twenty-eight, restrictions, four dash twenty-nine, revocation, and the addition of four dash thirty, applications may be forwarded to Board of Supervisors. If approved, temporary events, musical, entertainment, festivals, and fireworks, pyrotechnic display application would be administratively approved by county staff. However, if deemed necessary by county staff by request of the Chair of the Board of Supervisors, applicants, applications may be forwarded to Board of Supervisors for review and approval. Mister Webb?
Uh, so just, we worked on this for several months, and it was, you know, based on a, a large event that could have potentially, I guess, been dangerous, unfortunately was not, uh, if we weren't aware of it. We do have the seventy-eight ordinance, which is, this would be an update of the seventy-eight ordinance, modernize it a little bit. The big thing is maybe administrative for events five hundred to a thousand. And I would talk to a few venues and event people in the county, and I really don't think there were a lot of events that are over five hundred people. But for the ones that are, you know, we sent, Tracy has sent this out to different venues, you know, because venues are a big thing now. We talk about it a lot in here. But I did talk to someone from O'Mountain, and they were supportive of it. I know it was a good idea. Basically, if we do get an application, or we get an application, is, if I get as zone administration, or John, I guess, as the county administrator, we'll sit down and email everybody, and services, and John Scherer, everyone will be involved. Sheriff, say, look, you know, we've actually got an application now for ones that have about five hundred people in the end of September. So we'll all look at it, make sure that protocols are in place, that at least there's, we're aware, we're not trying to, you know, throw a thousand stacks of paper at someone, which is kind of basically, you're going to have food trucks, make sure you know that you got to make sure the health department is here. You know, if you're going to need parking, all those things, just make sure it's at least been considered by the applicants. And I think that's really a way to make sure that there's, a situation arises that we're kind of caught unaware. And it is a large event, and I did look at several ordinances, and I did add the idea that if it's a very large event, that I do think the board should be involved. If it is something that's, that's, you know, thousands of people, that I don't think it should be something that just should be administrated, pretty obvious that I think the board should have some overview or oversight. So we've gone through things, thankfully amended this, looked at it many times, and then we bounced it back forward. If you have any questions for me regarding this, I don't think we're trying to go out and police people who are having fireworks at their residence. But, you know, if a brewery or someone's having a fire type of display, then we do have forms that they can fill out, make sure that they, or a proper license, and that there's at least awareness on everyone's, to the county's perspective, awareness of what's going on.
Cool. Who has questions for, Webb, who has questions for? Sean Gregg, do you have a comment on this one?
Um, I have, I have several. Um, I was reminded of the Board of Supervisors of the, um, temporary use statute that we had several years ago, um, where people were allowed to do things for up to, I believe, was fourteen days per month on their property. And functionally, what that did under a literal reading of that definition in the zoning ordinance, um, it created the possibility that they could get any number of businesses that were operating, um, without the need for any kind of permit. Um, I had mentioned in the works session of the, uh, planning commission, my concern about the fact that there was no restriction on lot sizes. In other words, if I have a two acre parcel of land, just to take a really standard size, I could try to do all kinds of things. And if I had crowd control problems, well, you know, you can say that things are impractical, but just because it's impractical doesn't mean somebody may not try to do it. And then we are leaving our law enforcement and EMS people with a potential mess on their hands. So I think lot size becomes an issue, parking becomes an issue, all of those things. I know we attempt to address them. But my concern is in the practical application of these types of things. Um, I did go online, and there was a phenomenon appearing, I think it was in Indiana, where someone was promoting what they called backyard wrestling promotions, which would be allowed by them. And basically, they were, um, you know, consensual felonious assaults on one another, where people are, you know, throwing each other down on thumbtacks, all kinds of things. And, uh, you know, a lot of it, and I've mentioned that it's an extreme situation in my knowledge. We have not had that in Madison County. But the problem is, this ordinance really creates an opportunity for people to do that sort of thing. Um, you know, the, the real problem with it, I think, is, you know, relates to the fact that we do not limit the number of people for whom these, uh, events would occur. With regard to the practicality of the ordinance, I think in section four dash twenty-five, I would name the state police and also federal law enforcement agencies as having the license to come onto the property. And I would give serious consideration, because again, this can happen in neighborhoods, of restricting music until eleven P.M. at night as opposed to midnight. Um, you know, there are some people that go to bed fairly early, and midnight is a more difficult time for them. But those would be my concerns. Um, I would suggest that perhaps if we take a second to look at this, just to make sure that we are not creating any unintended consequences with this ordinance.
The only thing I would say is that the current ordinance doesn't, I mean, you, you could apply for a festival in the court of current provision, and it, I don't think there's a seventy-eight one, there's any mention to, to lot size. Um, so, you know, I don't know if it's been a problem in the past, but I guess, you know, again, my involvement was because we had the event where there were several hundred people on motorcycles, and physically hadn't any, you know, any knowledge of it, but, um, I mean, as far as that, I don't see anything wrong with that. I just don't, I mean, it hasn't been in the ordinance, and I, I, you know, we come back in a year, and people are having large events on one acre property. I mean, they came into, they came in to do an event, and actually did an event, go through this process, and if you're planning on having five hundred people on a two acre property, I'd probably say it's, it's not a good idea. I mean, it wouldn't improve you, or you'd be long to the board, and have them, have you guys, have y'all tell them it's not approved, so. It seems a little bit far fetched for there, but I understand, Sean, you're kind of, you know, in case, you know, worst case scenario. But I think what we have on the books, this is, is better.
Yes, please. Okay, uh, this question is kind of for Sean and for Ligon, so, um, you know, this, we're looking at, this is not part of the zoning ordinance here. We've, we've got things in the zoning ordinance that, that address that temporary use and seasonal use. So this is not that. So how do those, these two things marry up? Are we going to say the same thing in our codification, the section four of the codification, as, and say it again in the zoning? Or should it be in one place or the other? I'm, I'm thinking that, that the zoning takes this a step further. But I, I could be wrong. See what I'm saying?
I agree with you, Mister Yalla. I think that it does.
Okay. Uh, so, so we, so we need to look at, I'd say, yeah, we will put this on the back burner and perhaps get the planning commission involved to, to, uh, marry these two together. I don't know. Is that reasonable? Does that make sense, Ligon?
Um, you mean just moving this into the, so this is, that's, it's coded by a different area of the ordinance. The zoning ordinance, the temporary events, which some people are...
They need to complement each other, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Well, I, I kind of think they do. It's not in the zoning code this, you know. But, uh, yeah, I, I don't, I mean, if you want to move it, recode it by somewhere else, that's fine. I don't, I don't know if it really changes the meat and potatoes of this ordinance, whether it's in the zoning code or standalone.
What do you say about this, Sean Gregg?
Um, I think, I mean, I have not studied it to see how well it complements zoning ordinance. Um, I do think that it does require some additional study, and one of the components of that would be to make sure that it does in fact complement what our zoning ordinance does. I'm not saying it's a bad ordinance. I'm, I'm, I'm recommending that we study this a little further, and I think it is appropriate to get some input from the planning commission, because they, they take the time to investigate these things and, uh, you know, and ask the questions, you know, in terms of what the best and worst case scenarios might be.
All right. Um, does the board have any more comments, questions on this? I still think we need to go through the public hearing process. To the public, to the public. Any questions, thoughts, comments? None of them. I'm looking at you, Whitefish.
Well, I, I think if, you know, the same language is in one ordinance as is in the, you know, what we, we've done on all the event venues, then I think it could be confusing, as you had brought up. And I think it, it might be a mesh, meshing of the two would be easier than, but I definitely will let them work at it. That's my comment.
All right. The Gray, all right, any other public comment? The Gray family has reached out to me on, on this one specifically, and their big concern, they are the ones that had the very large article at the end. Their concern was getting sign offs on these would be, they don't want to just send somebody all over the county trying to track down people to sign this thing off. I assure them that the, that is not the intent of this. Uh, the intent is actually just solely for public safety. Um, we've kind of gone and got, go down a much greater path, is what it looks like to me. But I do certainly hope that Madison County keeps this in mind, so that public safety is the idea. It's not just making people jump through a bunch of hoops to accomplish what they want to do on their own property. Kind of where I'm at. Sounds like we need to go back on this order, on this revision, um, and we should weigh it. And Ligon and Mister Webb, um, come up with a task for the planning commission to kind of go down to analyze and recommend back to us so that the two sides aren't complimentary. Does that make sense, or not? The board, everybody? Uh, somebody want to make a motion?
Yeah, Mister Chairman, I'm moved that we table the amendments and revisions in Chapter four of the outdoor music entertainment ordinance.
Second.
Uh, motion made, Secretary. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signature, if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Do the same sign. Thank you. Thank you all for your directions to here. Um, we don't have any old business. We do have new business. Sean Gregg, tell us about the opioid litigation resolution. Hold on. Now, hold on, Sean Gregg. You hear me? There it was, there it was. Sean Gregg? Anyone else can fire a whistle. Yeah, we went back with you. We're on the opioid resolution. You want to tell us about it?
Yes, um, the resolution kind of speaks for itself. Um, this is part of what we have been doing with, um, you know, several of the suits, you'll recall that we passed a resolution to support these settlements with the Purdue formal family. Um, this one relates, however, to the, uh, to the Mallencroft, um, settlement. Uh, this has been recommended to us by our outside council. Uh, this is a resolution that we have addressed. I have modified and reused from Madison County. By signing this, we are signaling to our council that we agree with what they have done, and we will take whatever portion of the award is allocated to us based on the mathematical formula that they have.
Do we have any questions for Sean Gregg? I've got one small thing, Sean. Paragraph four says, where is the county's outside opioid litigation council has recommended that these counties block cities. But you want to just take the block?
Just, just delete, just more downtown city. I, 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 just walk through city and we're good.
Yeah, that's all I had. All right. Um, any other questions on this one? What, what pledge do you reckon for? Yeah, Mister Chairman, I'm moved that we approve resolution number twenty twenty-one dash eighteen.
Second.
Uh, motion made, Secretary. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signature, if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Do the same sign. Um, anybody have any information in correspondence? Brian's still doing a good job in this. Nice to have you on, we can hear you on this. Um, hot wood, Cameron. Bye, Christian, all aboard.
I'm, I'm not here representing you, no, tonight. I'm representing the American Legion, Code One Five Seven in Madison. And I'm here to request waiving of the fees, the pavilion permit fees for turn down and rebuilding the pavilion which we took over from Parks and Rec in the county earlier this year.
which we took over from Parks and Rec in the county earlier this year. Before I get to the specifics of the pavilion, I'd like to go over a couple of things what the Legion is doing. We put new roof on the boat, we put a new roof on it. The pool, no, we're not going to build a pool, or Mr. Jackson, I know you didn't ask that, so. County Roofing did a great job, we did a final walkthrough, it's, uh, so the place is looking, but Weeble Works came out and tore down the old oak tree, because it was sitting on a rock and ready to fall down, and we did, uh, another tree, and we, and they contributed, they gave us that one hundred percent contribution to the American Legion. Uh, finally, we have resigned to upgrade the bathrooms, which haven't been completely redone since the building was built in, right after World War Two. And we're working with, uh, local business, bringing Coach, he's left, but he's going to donate some candy. The Coach is going to donate some, uh, time and effort to rebuild the bathroom. So, as you can see, money is real tight for us, because we are doing a lot of things. So, I've talked to Mr. Wilks, the building, we took the, uh, the tin off, and we got up there, and most of the trusses are bad. There's seventeen of them and about fifteen, so when you walk to the side of the post, the whole building goes through this too. So, it's, it's standing, if you've been out there, the roof is off, uh, it needs to come down. We couldn't tear the building down, because we, it's in the Eastman, R E C lines run right over. So, we had to go to them, with Mr. Wilks's help, he did that for us, and R E C says, Red Hat and Electric Corporation says that find the, the building exactly back, the same place, the same height. So, we're ready to do that, we've got most of the money. Cotton Law has given us, um, Home Supply has given us, uh, quite a bit of stuff to do that. So, we're ready to go. The public will still be able to use it, they, 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 they're not renting it, or the Hockey League's not using it. All we're asking is approximately five hundred dollars to waive those fees for us. And the building will come down probably as soon as I have to go through, uh, and then hopefully this week, if I get the, that's where we are.
We all want to? They're good civic org, they're good civic organizations, let's get on with it. Alright, somebody make a question.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I move to waive the, uh, building, if you're all around for demolition, or if it's just the building?
I just seen you were talking about-
Building permit, and he didn't get in the specifics exactly much, it's, it's the, it's building, I have to have a building permit, and then there's some kind of fees that, to collect all the information to-
The county fees associated with replacing the, um, I think it's shelter at American Legion.
Second.
Motion made, second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say a five. Saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Thank you. Get on, work on the board.
Yes, sir.
Alright, other public comment? Other public comment? Alright, we've got a closed session, thank y'all. I'm going to this made.
I moved that the court, in the closed session, so we can get the closed section, and support two dash thirty-seven, uh, eight, uh, for the special.
Motion made, second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say a five. Saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Thank y'all.